All right, very good. Let's start. All right, very good. I wanna call the meeting to order and wanna welcome everyone to the Wareham Zoning Board Appeal for tonight's agenda. And it is Wednesday, March 24th, 2021, and it is 6:31 PM. And apparently, we are on Zoom meeting. Call the meeting to order. Make a roll call. Everybody state their name.
Richard Sample here.
Jacob Morrison here.
Jim Akavachi here.
Chris Carte.
Veronica Devonese here.
And myself, Nazir Alqalasi. And so we're gonna go back to the old thing. I called the name as much faster. You just say yes. All right, we have some preliminary business. I guess we have none unless.
I see none.
Sonia have anything? Sonia, is there anything? No? No minutes, nothing? I'm assuming, right?
That's correct. No minutes tonight.
All right, very good. I see the Commissioner, Mr. Aquinas here as well. So which is good. I'm gonna jump quick to the continued public hearing. So these people don't have to wait. Whoever is here. I'm gonna go to 22-20 Frederick Mannix for 238 and 240 Sandwich Road. I guess they asked for continuance. Who's got the continuance?
Mannix, I think I saw that stapled to the agenda. I've got a copy of it.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I'm here. Attorney Jillian Morton as well.
Okay. You guys, you filed for a continuance?
We did, Mr. Chairman. We were able to have a meeting with the Commissioner today. And but we were respectfully asking for some more time. We made some some headway and looking to with his guidance, be able to add some submissions to you guys regarding the project.
And when you when you guys want to come back?
I believe in the continuance, I said the 14th. I know your your document.
It is what it says in this letter.
I know your document's pretty heavy, so I guess I would defer to you for that.
Yeah, no, the 14th is better for me.
Okay.
Okay, the 14th. So can we have a motion to move 22-20 to the 14?
So moved to continue and reschedule to April 14th, 2021.
I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second Veronica Devonese.
So like a second, all in favor, say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir. Aye. So we'll see you on on April 14th. And and how long council did the extension till?
Um, let me double check on that.
Decision deadline, right? You extended the decision deadline as well, right?
Till the end of April, Mr. Chairman. But if that's told, I'll I'll definitely request the extension.
Okay. All right, so that's continued. Let me 500. Okay, very well. And we're gonna also we're gonna also do continue public hearing. That's a quick one. 6-21 Jackie Nichols on 3A Mutt Palmer Drive. Hi Jackie, the public hearing still open. And last time, I I I believe Veronica and Chris wanted to go look at it. Did you guys had a chance? Did you talk to Jackie? You met her there? So what's what do you think?
Yeah, who do you want to? Yeah, we did. We went and I I think looks pretty good where she wants to put it. It's that the situation with all the houses facing different directions.
Right.
Not even just her property being the duplex and having the difficulty with the backyards, but everybody's facing it different ways. So I think it will look fine.
Chris, did you look at it?
Yes, yes, I went there and and I do agree with Veronica. I do see like her hardship there having the topography and everything. And I have no I have no rejections with it. I'm fine with it.
All right, any any other board member want to comment on this project?
We're moving on. We're gonna hear this tonight?
It's been open. We continue it last time because Veronica and Chris wanted to do a visit.
I get it.
Okay, anyone in the public want to speak in this matter? If I hear none, can we move to close?
So moved by Jim Akavachi.
Okay, Jim moved to close 6-21. Do I have a second?
I second Richard Sample.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
And Nazir, aye. Jake, you weren't here, so you can vote on it anyway. So any discussion before we make any wishes? I hear none? Can we have some wishes?
I make a motion to grant as presented by the applicant standard conditions.
Okay, and I would like to add that she did meet the statute requirement for Mass General laws, 48 Section 10, the fourth statute requirement for for a variance. And the very basic, I mean, the very hardship for this matter was the shape of the lot and the topography. So please, Sonia, add these on the decision. So I have that motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica to grant. All in favor, say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
And Nazir, myself, aye, it can. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you very much. And thank you for coming out to look at the site. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Happy gardening.
All right, so we go back to our regular public hearing. 7-21 Karen and Bruce Pierce, care of Lockwood Architects, special permit or variance, 17 West Boulevard, map 1036. Jimmy, yours.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on March 24th, 2021 at 6:30 PM to consider petition number 7-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622 and Table 628 and Article 13, Section 1352 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Karen and Bruce Pierce of 23 Thorpe Street, Needham, Mass, proposing to construct a second floor addition over the single-story kitchen area toward the rear of the property located at 17 West Boulevard onset map that appears on assessors map 1036 in the onset Village 2 zoning district.
Very well, who's presenting the case?
Bill Lockwood here for the petitioners.
Okay, the petitioners was you, Mr. Lockwood. Are they with you tonight?
They may be here virtually. I hope they are. I do not know.
All right, just your address for the record?
My address is my office address is 219 Onset Avenue.
All right, very well. Let's hear it.
Okay, the proposed project is to add an addition to the existing cottage located at 17 West Boulevard. There is an existing cottage and an existing shed on the property. We're proposing to add about a 60 square foot addition to the first floor, which is over area that is currently existing deck area. And then over that and over a portion of existing first floor single-story structure, we're proposing to add about a 200 square foot addition and a 30 square foot deck. This project has been before the Conservation Commission. We will the we're not changing the building coverage, nor are we changing the lot coverage. We will be increasing the floor area ratio by about 5%. It is located in a flood zone that is served by town sewer, town water and gas. And you have the package before you you can see in the last page of the packet picture of what the structure looks like. You can see from the drawing in the pocket what we're proposing to do as well as the site plan in the other pocket. You have any questions? Then we'll be happy to respond.
All right, we're gonna stop. Okay, in this matter, I have I have a Chris sitting on for Walter's chair. Mr. Carter will be voting on this. All right, so we start by Chris.
I I've looked it over. I looked at the the plans and everything. I really don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Veronica.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay.
No, excuse me, no questions.
Jimmy.
The quiet one.
Jimmy, do you have any questions?
I'm all set. I'm ready to go ahead and make a positive motion.
Okay, let me just look quick.
Let's hear from the public.
All right. Okay, just no comments from the board. We go to the public. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this project? Okay, I hear none. Anyone want to speak against this project? Okay, I hear none. So so what are we looking here for? You need it. It looks like a special permit for me. Right?
I I believe that would be the case, yes.
Because you already it's existing non-conforming the floor ratio area, right?
The big floor ratio, floor area ratio, plus we're going to be constructing in the set within the setback, but with on the but on the existing footprint.
Right, but everything is non-conforming, existing non-conforming prior anyway.
That's correct.
Okay, so that would be a special permit. However, however, we still like to get a vote from the board member to get relief on 1352. Board members, any questions before we close?
And for me?
Okay, we're fine. So okay, if there's no questions, let's move to close.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to close by Jim. It is 72-21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor to close. Say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jimmy.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir. Aye. Okay. On the okay, if the does the board feel it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood, so we treat that as special permit?
I I don't feel it's more detrimental. If you need us to vote on it, I make a motion that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood and should be treated as a special permit.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, I hear none. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Okay, now I'm sorry, and Jimmy, aye, okay. And now what's now the wishes on the special permit?
Move to move to grant as requested standard conditions.
Okay, with the finding the same as well, not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Okay, so motion with Jim for 7-21 to grant to standard condition. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, it carries. Thank you. Just put a note here.
That was Mr. Lockwood, good job on presenting a nice package easy to follow. Thank you.
Okay, so that's good. Wait, Veronica, what's here? All right, let's move to 8-21. KB Conlin, special permit or variance, 78 West Boulevard, map 1 lot 74. Jimmy.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on March 24th, 2021 at 6:30 PM to consider petition number 8-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 13, Section 1352 and Section 1392 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to KB Conlin of 110 Adams Street, Hoboken, New Jersey, proposing to install a new egress bulkhead at the rear of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 78 West Boulevard onset mass that appears on assessors map 1 lot 744 in the onset Village 2 zoning district.
Okay, for the record, this one, Mr. Sample will be sitting in Mr. Cruz's seat. Who's presenting this matter? Who's here for 78 West Boulevard?
Sorry, I was on mute. This is KB Conlin.
KB Conlin, Conlin, okay. So you presenting the case, ma'am?
Yes.
All right, well, let us know. What are you doing?
I would like to propose putting a bulkhead to the house on the backside of the building. It presently has a a trap door as an entrance inside the dwelling to the basement, which I feel is very dangerous, and I would like to build a bulkhead outside. The section I'm opposing is the backside of the house, whereas the that's the only place that really can be utilized for this. And that is why I need the variance because it goes into the setback. And that's what the issue is. So I'm seeking a special permit for that.
Okay, let me just look quick here. You now the application says you're looking for a special permit. And then the Commissioner says a variance would be required if the board deemed that.
If and only we find it more detrimental.
Okay, very good. All right, let me look at it quick. All right, I'm gonna stop by the Richard comment on that.
By today, I can see what she's trying to do. I'm fine with it right now. No questions.
Okay, Veronica.
What's the existing nonconformity right now?
Setback.
The setback?
It's right now she has 70 inches. So if you want that that oh, hold on, I'm sorry. Oseo Ave. Mrs. Colin Conlon, right?
Yes, thank you.
Now, the the bulkhead. So you have two streets from the front and the back?
Two streets?
I mean, if the back of your house is on Oseo Ave?
That's the that's the town property. That's the circle that kind of abuts all of our lands. That is town property. It's like a it's just it's like a dirt road. So what that land abuts is town, a town street.
Did you didn't you didn't have an engineer doing the the surveying and exact measurements like that?
The well, the original drawing was done by an engineer. That's what that was from. So I just took the measurements from that.
Okay.
Is those, excuse me, Naz?
Yeah.
Is Oseo Avenue a paper road? It's not a it's a it's not normally used by anybody to access there?
Correct. It's just a a dirt access road to the back of the houses.
But there's nobody there's nobody that owns land that this would be their only way into it.
Correct.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Naz.
That's okay. Let me look at something here. While I'm looking, Richard, I mean, Jake, do you have a question?
No, no questions at this time.
Veronica.
Yeah, I'm just I'm looking to see where this bulkhead is being placed. Why? Why is it not being placed? I mean, I don't know how to reference it. I guess why is it not being placed toward? What's that?
There's yeah, because there's only that's really the only section that it can be placed. The other side of it, the right side of it is the door, the entrance, and then the other side of it has all the plumbing that continues for the whole house. So that would be very difficult, not to mention the fact if the even the series B, the one that is the shortest, would come out into almost into the other house, that ease way in between.
Yeah, the east side is the east side is completely definitely out of the picture. So all you've got is the west and the and the south.
Can we? Can anybody share this? I don't know how to share. So the oh, the east side. Okay, so I'm looking at like I'm not sure.
On the south side of the house. I'm sorry, she's putting it on the north side.
Let me jump in. Excuse me, let me jump in.
Go ahead.
When Mrs. Colin, when we do a variance or a special permit, I don't know if they informed you at the planning department. It's it's the rules are we need a surveyor stamp plan with the proposed what you're doing. That's why we have all these questions from the board members. Be for us to grant you, it looks to me here that you want to be like four inches from the property line, which is I'm not saying it's good or bad. But for us to do, I mean, you have 70 inches. You want to go 64. So there's only six inches left from Oseo Ave, Oseo Avenue. For things like this, that critical, we definitely need a surveyor plan. Would do, I personally not willing to vote on this unless we have a surveyor plan. Your plan since 2001, I understand is pretty legit. But when you do an addition that critical and that close to the property line has to be drafted by a Massachusetts land surveyor.
But I but I believe that is a the let me just look up.
Yeah, it is. This this one, it is done in 2001 by Land Survey. But what you proposing, we need a full size. Showing your whole property, your
I have that, but the problem is you can't scan in that whole document. So I I scanned in the part that it proposed to.
I totally understand. But that part you adding right here, that this has to be drafted by a surveyor and has to be stamped as proposed because if you if you are to go and do it and you cross the property line, it's so critical and close. And and it's the rules of our board. When it's special permit or a variance, a surveyor plan has to be submitted. I want to see if if at least one board member agrees with me. I hate to give you it's not I'm not trying to give you a hard time. We have we have every we everybody has to do this, especially that critical. Any board member agrees with me on that?
Ozzy, I I I have some concern with it because when you go to dig the hole, if she's six inches away from the property line, you need a blowout area to to do your work. I'm sure six inches is not going to be enough to dig that hole and to get it in. So we like you said, I do agree that we do need some better measurements given.
Right. How how deep is your bulkhead, Jeff, Miss Colin?
Um.
What type? Is it type C or type B?
It's type B, which is the smallest that I could do. I mean, I
So you might you might you have to do, of course, dig safe, and you might have to do this very carefully because you go by the you might ask the town to DPW make sure because if that road comes down or sun, you're getting big trouble. It's it's very important because the plan again will show us the edge of pavement, the edge of the grass of the town. So
Well, there is no pavement. It's just a dirt road.
I understand. But we will have we all we know, maybe there's a water line. So you definitely need a registered surveyor plans.
If Mr.
Just to make myself clear, when I use the term blowout, you got to dig a hole to put the foundation in to make the stairs. So the blowout. You you I don't think you can be on somebody else's property, town property, anybody else's. So I don't I I that's why I was just saying that the blowout needs to be a little bit more, just to clarify.
Yes, so and who agrees with me for a plan as well? Veronica, do you agree?
Yes, I do agree.
You only need two people to agree and because you're not you need four out of five. So when's the next time?
I do want to make a comment only for my myself because I I actually have a hard time with this with plans or without plans. So six inches, she's going to be on somebody else's property to get into her house, and we're allowing that. And I I'm not comfortable to allow that.
Okay, so so this is the plan.
But I actually wouldn't be getting, but I wouldn't be going on to someone else's property. That how would I get into my house anyway? I mean,
Well, you have six inches to get into your bulkhead. If you're not going to use it, why put it there? Because you can't stay six inches. When you come, when you open your door and walk out of your bulkhead, you're going to be standing on somebody else's property. Unless you can stay in six inches.
But it's town, but it's town property is you're saying anybody's property.
Correct.
Including town property.
Any property that's not yours.
Okay, anyway, so like, for instance, my neighbor, the entrance to the back of their back house, to get to that property, they would have to stand on town property. Anybody.
Mrs. Colin, we understand, and this is common over there. And the
No, I'm just trying to address her question. So she asked me, she's concerned because
Right.
If I was coming out of the bulkhead, where would I be standing? But
That's why.
That would be no different than anyone that lives on the backside of that. The only way they could get into the backside of my neighbor's property would be to walk over town property.
Very well. But this is what we're gonna need. We're gonna need not you could do yourself the architectural plan, draw it for us, how it's gonna look on the outside, unless we have it in the package. I don't think we do. And you're gonna need a surveying plan. Jake, what do you how you feel about that?
Well, I agree with you, Nazir.
Okay, Jimmy.
Couple of comments. And and I'm kind of speaking through the chair and to the applicant here. I'm looking at this. You're gonna have a 51-inch wide set of stairs. And I'm using the north arrow on your plan, and you're going to be heading from, if you will, from the south towards the north, heading up out of your basement towards Oseo Avenue. I hear my fellow board members concerned about the six inches between the top of your stairs and Oseo Avenue. I mean, certainly people step out their front door and onto streets if that was a street, but you and I also hear my fellow members' concerns about the blowout. May I suggest to you that you consider instead of going 64 inches from the back of your house and having your stairs head in a northerly direction, come out 48 or 51 inches from the back of your house and have your stairs run in an easterly or westerly, I would say westerly direction. So instead of going out of the back of your house and heading towards Oseo Avenue, you'd come out of the back of your house and head into your own backyard. That would make how much you stick out of your house. 51 from 64, I think, is 13 inches less. Add 13 and 6. And now you got 19 inches from the property line. You're going to satisfy a lot of concerns. It's actually going to work better for you from what I can see from this aerial view. But I still agree with both the other members that you need to bring this back drawn, and you need to, you know, you need to show it to us on paper by somebody with a damn piece of paper that says they can draw this from there, and we can count on their measurements. Unfortunately, in this one, because you're so close. That's my my comments. Thank you.
All right, so you're gonna need architecture plans. You could do them yourself if they're nice and readable, and you need the surveyor to draft this for you. Can you come back on? You think you'll be ready on April 14?
Yep.
All right, so can we?
Can I ask you a couple of questions? Because I wasn't told this by either, I mean, Sonia knows I I've I've called, I've Can I ask you a couple, couple of questions? Because I wasn't told this by, um, either, I mean, Sonia knows, I, I've, I've called, I've asked, I, I prepared, I sent every single thing that was required of me, though I was not specifically told. Unfortunately, I wanted to be prepared for you. Um, I'm not sure I really a hundred percent understand the side staring because again, I met with three, several contractors to see what the different options are. They said it was only, the only option was the back of the house for the various reasons.
Right.
Um, like I told you, it, it is a very dangerous situation. My neighbor, neighbor almost died from falling through that. I am not, I mean, someday I'm not gonna be able to hold, open that, uh, trap door. So something has to be done. Um, if, if it, if there is a, another option, which you're saying from the side, I'm just not, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of how that works and why a contractor didn't opt.
Excuse me. Right. Let me, let me, let me, let me simplify things. When your surveyor go, I recommend everyone on the board member, if you guys have a chance, make a visit. I will myself look at the place. Uh, go, going back that the planning board did not inform you. The planning board, each case is deferred from the others. You have to go online and do your homework. I mean, they do what the best they can, but uh, they, the, the, the list goes on and on. They cannot, I mean, comprehend the whole thing, but there's a, you go online and you see everything you need to do. So it, it's not the commissioners fault, the building department or the planning board, like they help as much as they can. It's up to the applicant to go online, just like everyone else and figure out all this. So I recommend that all of us at one time for the next two weeks, take a right there. So when next year, I didn't, I usually do. I didn't have time today to go look at it.
It, it's probably much better to see it visually.
Yes, we will go there. I promise I will. I hope board members will go as well. And you, you need a surveyor plan and he recommend, but and we go from that. I think this best, best, best to do. Before we go, is there anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project? I hear none. Is there any audience, someone in the public wanna speak against this project?
Yes, it's Denise Hickson. I would like to speak in favor of this project. Ultimately, once she, uh, once she commits.
Ma'am, Denise.
Yes.
Listen, Kevin, I need your full name and address first.
Sure. My full name is Denise Hickson. My address is 5 Fenton Street in Hockington, Massachusetts. My mother owns the house at 6 First Street. She's very ill and unable to be here this evening, so I'm speaking on her behalf. Once Jazz Conlon's, you know, meets the requirements of your board in terms of the plans uh, and the other things that you set aside, we would like to support her moving forward because it is a dangerous situation in, in the house at this point in time.
That's very good to know. I thank you very much. I mean, it's always helpful to have a neighbor and support makes our life easier. Anyone else would like to speak in favor?
Patrick Brophy?
Yes, Mr. Brophy. You name an address?
Uh, Patrick Brophy, 61 West Central Ave.
Yes.
So the, the property is in this, the, the rear of my property abuts this town property to the, to the rear of the applicant's house. It is a very tight area. I can understand the concerns of the commissioners about whether it approaches or impinges upon others' property. As best I can tell, it's a paper road. Uh, I agree that the, with the applicant that basically this is rare access to the properties, uh, involved. Uh, I certainly have no objection to her wanting to, to make the house safe by adding a bulkhead. My only concern would be, you know, when people have done work in the rear of the houses before, they blocked up the access to, um, the other homeowners in the area. Uh, there are people that, for example, park their vehicles in the, in the back of their houses and use this paper road as the way to get to where they would park their cars. So that would be my only concern with it. I certainly would support her getting a bulkhead, uh, placed for safety reasons.
All right. Very good. Excellent. Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else?
They did, they, let me, may I ask just one question, Mr., I'm sorry if I butcher your name, but Escobache?
Mr. Escobache.
Escobache.
So could you just, so I, I just know because I don't wanna, um, you are, how, how do you are proposing? You're proposing it going from one of the other sides. I mean.
No, 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 no.
No, no.
Your, your foundation.
I didn't mean it that way. I meant that.
No, no, listen, listen.
Okay.
Your fa, your door and your foundation is gonna be exactly in the same spot that you're gonna put it in right now by your proposal. What I'm suggesting might be better. Same, the same foundation cut. You're gonna come out the same way, but instead of coming out and heading straight up a set of stairs, you're gonna come out to a landing, you're gonna turn left and you're gonna head up the stairs and head towards your own side yard instead of walking up and landing on Osseo, Osseo Avenue. I'm just turning the stairs 90 degrees, not 180. I'm not moving the wall. You're gonna come out the back of a house. Instead of going straight up, you're gonna come out and take a left or take a right. But I'm suggesting in this instance, you'd be taking a left. Just make your stairs, just turn your stairs sideways instead of straight out. And, and I think you'll find, you'll, you'll, you'll have, you'll be further from the property line. It'll allow your contractors to work, et cetera, et cetera. It, it may, it may, it may not be flush with the side of your house. It may come a little further into your side yard there, but I think you might, I don't know, but on quick look, I think you might find it to be a, a superior approach.
Sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Let me add something. What Jim tried to say, instead of coming out 64 inches and you're only six inch from the Osseo Ave, you come out like 48. You might have to build like a doghouse or they call it a doghouse. Instead of bulkhead, it might work better for you. Get, get the, the surveyors to go there. Like I said, I promise I go look at it. So board member, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we'll make it work next time we come here. All right. So let's, uh, can we get a motion to continue until the April 14?
So moved.
So moved by Jim to continue eight, eight dash 21. Uh, do I have a second? Second by Veronica. All in favor, say hi. Veronica?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
And myself, I. So we'll see you on April 14.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for being patient with us too.
Of course.
All right. Next one, nine, nine dash 21, Linda Rose Careoff, Attorney Shafoni, Special Permit or a Variance, 11, 11 Vernal Street. Jimmy?
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on March 24th, 2021 at 6:30 PM to consider petition number nine dash 21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article Six, Section 628 and Section 621, and Article 13, Section 1352 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws. Two, Linda A. Rose, trustee of the Rose Family Nominee Trust, care of Timothy Shafoni, Esquire of 191 Main Street, Wareham, Mass, proposing to construct two rear additions and a full second floor at the single family dwelling located at 11 Vernal Street, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 50, what's 264 in the R30 zoning district.
Okay, who's presenting the case?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Tim Shafoni, members of the board.
Okay, very well. That's yours, Mr. Shafoni.
Uh, thank you. Um, as a brief overview, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my client who's here tonight, Linda Rose, she's from Norton, Mass. Um, she's retired, recent widow. Uh, she has maintained Swift Beach, uh, address for almost 15 years as her summer home and her goal is to sell her Norton home and make Wareham her future home, which she's very excited about. And she also has a son that will, uh, be with her. Uh, the scope of the project, as indicated by Mr. Escobache in more detail, is basically to add a small addition and also a second floor. If I may, uh, draw the board's attention to the photographs that were included with the packet, you will see, uh, a front view and a rear view. In the rear view, you will see that there's a, um, extension there, uh, where it's an entrance down to the basement. And it extends about five feet. And if I draw your attention to the engineering plans and I believe it's the second page there, you'll see that basically what she's asking for, what she's proposing is to square off the back to come out an additional five feet, um, from, uh, the rear of the house and, and basically squaring it off. And she's also asking, uh, to put on a second floor. And, uh, if I may again, draw the board's attention to the other picture, just, um, what's unique about this particular piece of property in, in some manner is that there's parking on both sides. And, uh, the denial letter from the, uh, building department basically sets forth three different areas of concern. One is the, uh, floor area ratio. The second is the building coverage. And the third is, um, the boundary requirements. And, uh, if we look at the building coverage, what my client is proposing is an increase from what is currently allowed in the R30 zoning district of 25%. Uh, with those two small five foot additions is to increase the building coverage to 27.09 or a little over a 2% increase. The, uh, floor area ratio, because of the addition would, um, raise the, uh, the allowed or 30% floor area ratio to 48.5%. And the third area of concern was the boundary requirements and she's currently on one side, a deficient, uh, by six inches. So, uh, she's 9.6 inches where she needs 10 inches. So for those three areas of concern, uh, she's before the board on a variance request and/or special permit on the boundary requirements. And, um, I can go into, uh, some more detail on the variance or, Mr. Chairman, if you, uh, one questions to be asked at this time?
Well, let me, let me, I'm looking through it quick. I, I think if the board agrees, it's not detrimental because you could extend the nonconformity because it's definitely not confirming the way it says, but I'm gonna, this one will be, this one, Mr. County will be sent on this, uh, on Mr. Cruz's chair. So I'm gonna start with Chris. Are you Chris with us?
Um, yep. I, 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 I agree. I think it's not detrimental.
Okay. All right. Uh, any comment on the plans or anything for Attorney Shafoni? Chris, you wanna?
No, I, no, I have no more comments on it right now.
Veronica? I think you mute, but no, you.
I don't know. She sounds better with the mute button on.
Yeah, that's true. Stay like that.
Um, Jim, aren't you supposed to be the silent one? Okay, your silence would be appreciated right now.
Okay, Veronica.
Um. So this is going from conforming to nonconforming, cor, correct, in terms of floor area ratio?
It, it, well, it's, uh, it is, she's, she's already nonconforming. She's extending the nonconformity. I'm looking at her right now, but I think she's extending it. I don't have, there's too many paperwork here, but.
So.
I'll tell you in a minute.
Okay.
I think she's increasing the nonconformity. I think it's, um, maybe Attorney Shafoni can tell us quick. I had highlighted it. I'm.
Yes, it's, um, it's a new nonconformity. So it was preexisting. Um, the, um, requirement 22.5% allowed is 30% and, um, she's looking to raise it to 48.5%. So it's a new nonconformity.
So she's currently conforming.
Which would require a variance?
No, she, let me, let me explain it quick. On the setback, the setback, she's already, uh, one side, she's 14 feet. That's confirming. And she's, she's gonna be, the addition will be 13.9. She's still conforming. The other side, she's nine and a half. She's not conforming. So she's extending the nonconformity to 9.6 feet. So that could be a special permit allowed if the board agrees to. Another thing, the 20, the, the floor, the, the floor area is 20, it's 25% there. She's 25.2. And she wants to increase it by 13 square feet. So she's already nonconforming. So by, if the board agrees, it's not detrimental. Again, it could be a special permit. So I don't believe she needs a variance if the board agrees, it's not detrimental. If Mr., the commissioner's back, he probably, is Commissioner Requena here? David?
I think, I think that's, I think we're mixing two different, excuse, I see if I might. It's Jim.
One second. David was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to step on Dave. Go ahead, Dave. Something's going on with Dave.
David, bad connection. We can't hear you. I'm gonna have, uh, Jimmy speak if you could change your computer or something.
I think what Veronica originally asked is are we creating a new nonconformity? And it appears that Veronica is correct. We are. Her floor area ratio currently is conforming, but by granting this relief, she'll be nonconforming. It's a new nonconformity. I think that's what Mr. Requena put in his response. Of the three items that he boarded, one of them created a new, not, just the FAR is new. She was conforming and she'll now be nonconforming.
Yes, I see that right now. You're right, Jimmy. Okay. So she will definitely need a variance on the, uh, on, uh, on the floor, floor area. That's, that's the variance she's gonna need.
So go ahead. I mean, we kind of interrupted Veronica and I think it should go back to her now.
Um, I'm just, I'm looking at these notes. So there's two variants is required. One would be for the floor area ratio and the other is the building coverage.
Correct.
She's currently conforming and she seeks this 25% is by right and they're seeking 27%. So the only thing that's not conforming right now is the setback. And that would be a special permit.
If the.
Yeah, the two would be a variance. And so I guess we need to prove a hardship here. And, or I'd like to hear what the hardship is.
Um, Counsel Shafoni, wanna, you wanna answer to this?
Uh, yes. Um, you know, as, as the board, uh, is well aware of, uh, there's four requirements for the variance. Um, the soil condition, safe topography of the land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district. Um, and, um, what, um, uh, board member Veronica had just alluded to, also there needs, there has to be a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And, um, the other two, desirable relief, uh, without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws. So I believe that the hardship, um, you know, would, uh, in fact, uh, be the controlling, um, area of concern. And that's understandable. I would suggest that there are perhaps more than one factor that would define the hardship in this particular situation. One, as the board members are aware, um, the area in question has a lot of small lots, the size of the lots, the shape of the lots. Um, throughout the years, I believe, uh, it's fairly evident from that area that many lots have been combined. Where there's bigger lots, you're able to, um, merge two lots together, build without requiring the variance that, uh, is needed in this situation. Uh, and based on that. And based on that, the size of the lot And the fact that it does affect the land would be a controlling hardship. As I indicated, it's also a hardship financial or otherwise that's noted. Even though that's not necessarily always directly applicable to running with the land. It is a hardship. It's a hardship to my client. It's, it's a hardship Affecting this property with, with not being able to improve it because of the size. So for those reasons, I would suggest that It would meet the requirements of a hardship in this case. And I would just point out That there are a sense, I believe, from every abutter except for one, which we just couldn't reach. That they're all in agreement that this is a wonderful idea that will improve the neighborhood.
Thank you, counsel. Just for the record, I have here, I'm gonna read the letters who's in support. They're all in support. I'm not gonna read the, the whole letter, but the substance, they all in support. Paul Andrews, Grania, Six Coolidge Road, they're in support. Nancy Palumbo, Two Coolidge Road, she's in support. Six Graham Street, Jennifer Lawrence, she's in support. Also Lisa McLenery, Ten Verno Street, she is also in support. And Frank and Anna Lutaro From Thirteen Verno Street, they're also in support.
So Now, now, there's, there's, there's three more people in support that were sent in supplementally. Last page of our packet.
Okay, so can you read the names, Jim, for the record?
Sure. Erin Foley Madiris of Fifteen Vernal. William M. Callahan of Nineteen Vernal and Diane M. Callahan of Nine Vernal.
Okay. That being said, let me see. I mean, apparently all the neighbors in support, Attorney Shafoni, I personally see he, he demonstrated that he does That she does meet the statutory requirement of a, of a variance. I still want to ask the public if there's anyone That we didn't mention the name in favor of this project, in support of this project. Any of the names I didn't read? Okay, I hear none. Is there anyone in the public who's against this project? Okay, I hear none. I'm gonna go back. Jake hasn't said nothing. Jake? Jake? Okay.
He put his microphone off.
Hey, no, sorry, sorry, guys. I'm in and out my wifi.
Ah, okay.
Sorry about that. I have no questions at this time.
No, no question. Okay, and this one is Chris is voting on that. Chris, you good with that so far?
So far, yes, thank you.
Veronica?
I know I'm, I'm not. I think that our floor area ratio is in place in, in order to control density and I don't I haven't heard a land hardship other than it's a small lot. That's You know, I just feel like I, I don't want to overlook The floor area limits that are in place in order to control the density And allow somebody who's conforming to become nonconforming because that sets a precedent for both For allowing nonconformities and conforming Circumstances like this.
Well, in, in adding, increasing the FAR, I think it's based on each project's merit. But I appreciate your comment. Anything else you want to add?
No, no.
Jimmy?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so before we go forward, If there's no more argument, the counselor, you wanna, before we close, you wanna say anything else?
Not particularly, Mr. Chairman, other than my client looks forward to improving the neighborhood And working with the board in all manners. And that would be it.
All right, very well. That being said, can we move to close?
So moved.
I have a motion to close by Mr. Akabachi. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a quick question before we close it?
Sure.
Of the applicant?
Sure.
What's the current Floor area ratio? Do you know?
Oh, yes, the
I think it's twenty. Just so right here. It's
Twenty-two point five.
So this would in effect more than double the size?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have the motion still on the floor by Jim. Do I have a second to close?
Jacob Morrison, I'll second that.
Okay, so all in favor to close, say aye. Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Okay, Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's closed. Any discussion?
I, I just have a question. Do we have Something coming up with the town, a vote? Are we changing the FAR? I thought I, I thought I saw something where we will be changing the FAR in the future, hopefully.
In certain areas, yeah, they're working on it. The town planner is with the commissioner, yes. They are gonna change and most likely this play, this one will be affected for the good, for the better. Okay, all right, so I guess we definitely got a We have two variances to grant. The ratio, the, the FAR ratio and the building coverage, right, counselor?
That is correct.
Right, and the setback Also as a variance, if the board wished to do so, or we could do the setback. If the board don't feel so much detrimental, we could do it As the, as a, as a special permit, or we could do the whole thing as a, as a variance. So what's the wishes of the board? Anybody has wishes?
If we can, if we can do it as a special permit, I think we're better off just doing special permits.
You can only do on the setbacks special permit. You can't do the FAR and And what's the other one?
What?
What area?
Coverage has to be, that has to be a variance.
So I guess we could group all three of them as variances, make one vote. If, if everybody's leaning that way, it would make it easier.
That's right. That's what I'm thinking. Okay, any wishes? Who's gonna make the wish?
So I make a motion to grant Variances for all three of the requested variances With standard conditions As presented.
As presented, and apparently I would add to this that it does As Attorney Shafoni demonstrated, it does meet the statutory requirement of a variance. So that motion by Jim, do I have a second?
I'll second that. Jake?
Jake, second. All in favor, say aye. Chris?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Veronica?
Deny.
Okay, it passes. Four zero, four, abstain apparently, and also it's four one zero. I carry. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very welcome. All right, next one. Ten dash twenty-one, L D E Holdings. If I may quit before this. I'm gonna jump back to the public hearing. Is anyone, the continued public hearing, is anyone here for Ventura? Paul Ventura? Paula Ventura?
I ran a little while ago.
Oh, okay. So I guess she asked for a continuance. I think she asked for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sonia Raposo. That was actually my error. She is not scheduled to be on today. And I personally spoke to her a little while ago.
Oh, okay. All right, very good.
I apologize.
She is scheduled?
For April fourteenth.
For, oh, okay, I see that.
She was continued from the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
She accepted.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go back to L D E Holdings. D B A Trade Roots, Brenner Sign, variance six, Tackle Lane, map one oh eight. And okay, who's the public hearing? Wanna read it, Jim, please?
This is all, this is a whole new, okay. The zoning board of appeals will hold An online public hearing on March twenty-fourth Twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to consider petition number ten dash twenty-one For a variance from the requirements of Article eleven, section one one two seven point two Of the Wayham zoning bylaws To L D E Holdings LLC, doing business as Trade Roots. Care of Brenner Signs of sixty-six Federal Furnace Road, Plymouth, Mass. Proposing construction and installation of an entrance sign located at six Statue Lane, Wayham, Mass. That appears on assessors map one oh eight. What, one zero zero six dash Q one in the industrial zoning district.
Okay, who's here from L D E Holdings?
I am Greg Brenner from Brenner Signs and Honings.
Okay, you want to talk about what you're doing?
Sure, yeah. So we're proposing As the, as the bylaw states, they're, they would only allow us to do a forty-square-foot illuminated sign on the building. Which would only give us about an eighteen-inch letter. And the distance from the highway That the visual would be where this side of the building is facing Would, is about four hundred feet, which is about a hundred and thirty-three yards. So an eighteen-inch letter is not going to be very visible. So we're proposing a seventy-square-foot sign and a twenty-four-inch illuminated, face-illuminated letter That would allow much better visibility.
Okay, is this the, is this the dispensary on the industrial park?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
And how big, how big of a sign you want to do?
Seventy square feet.
Versus forty, you're allowed forty?
Correct. The frontage on the building, on that side of the building is Over two hundred feet.
The length of the building or the distance from the highway?
No, distance from the highway is four hundred feet.
Okay, the building itself is two hundred feet long.
Correct.
Let, let me ask quicker, the Commissioner Requena. So he, he tell us much better quicker. What's the, what's the, why it's only forty square feet allowed?
Signed by law.
The bylaw only permits forty square feet of illuminated area.
Oh, okay.
Can I
Regardless that, regardless the size of the building, right, David?
Right, correct.
Okay, all right, so.
Now, change what he's permitted to have in area for the whole building, just what he's permitted to have An illuminated sign area.
Correct.
Okay, if it wasn't illuminated, he could do bigger?
Yes, he could.
Ah, all right. How about if it's not illuminated and he puts spotlights on it, he could do bigger?
I'd have to look at that, Mr. Chairman. We, I'm not sure if, if in, in his situation, if we permit external illumination.
Okay, I'll start. This one will be Richard Sample saying on this one. I saw by Richard. What's your comment? What do you think?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay, Veronica?
I, I understand the reason for that. I don't, and there's no real residential areas around. No homes that I think that the light pollution would necessarily affect. I don't really Have a problem with it.
Okay. Jake?
I don't, I don't have a problem with this at all.
Okay, I guess, I guess the I, Jimmy, you okay with that?
Yeah, a couple of comments.
Yeah.
I am okay with it. My comment would be to remind Members of the board that weren't here when we voted for Cardes and what's the, what's the
Job lot.
Job lot. When you go down Cranberry Highway, if you, if, if their signs conformed to the, to the bylaw as it's written, You'd need binoculars to read their signs. Same thing applies here. We're on one ninety-five on the exit ramp. It's, the speed limit's thirty-five. Average speed is about eighty. In order to read that, you'd be, you'd either be causing an accident or But anyway, and I, and I want to point out on the picture here, you see the used tire sign billboard there that was probably up Completely without a permit because that certainly exceeds the, the square footage. Maybe because it's not illuminated, it's okay. I don't know, but I just want to We've granted them a bunch of variances. We've tried to help them along. I, I think that it's a good idea for people To be able to find the building. So I'm, I'm okay with this.
Yeah, not to go off the subject, but yeah, you're right, that used tire never came before us, but Will, will, that's something else. Well, I certainly, I certainly agree. There is definitely a hardship for the property because The location of it, the topography location, it is Four hundred feet from the highway and that's the only pretty much of advertising, so It is unique, doesn't derogate from the intent of the bylaw. And I guess it meets the statutory requirement. All right, anyone in the audience, want to speak in favor of this project on the public? I hear none. Anyone in the public want to speak against this project? I hear none. Before, before we close, any, any discussion, Mr. Greg?
No, sir. I think we, we covered it. You guys had some good, good views on it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I believe Navionics had a big sign there because I know I could read that one from the highway. So to me, it didn't look any bigger than what that sign was, so I just wanted to make that comment.
All right, very well. Okay, that being said, can we move to close?
So moved.
Motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second, Richard Sample?
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So it's closed. What's the wishes now? Any discussion before we do wishes? No discussion? What's the wishes of the board?
Move to grant standard conditions. Jim Akabachi.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance as presented. My, Mr. Akabachi, do I have a second?
Second, Jacob Morrison.
Second, Jacob Morrison. All in favor, say aye. Jake?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
This one, Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye. I carry. Thank you, sir. All right, you're welcome. Next one, eleven dash twenty-one, Granite City Electric, care of Brenner Of same company, Brenner Sign on Nine Sand Pond Road. Jimmy?
The zoning board of appeals will hold a online public hearing On March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M To consider petition eleven dash twenty-one for a variance From the requirements of Article eleven, section one one two seven point two Of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Granite City Electric. Care of Brenner Signs of sixty-six Federal Furnace Road, Plymouth, Mass. Proposing construction and installation of a wall sign located at nine Sand Pond Road, East Wayham, Mass. That appears on assessors map one thirty-one What, one oh two seven in the C S Commercial Strip Zoning District.
All right. Mr. Greg, I guess, I guess, my last name, Greg, your name I have for that.
My last name is Brenner.
Greg Brenner and others, for the record?
Sixty-six Federal Furnace Road, Plymouth, Mass.
Okay, so again, so what are you doing there?
Okay, so this side of the building has a hundred and twenty foot of frontage. And again, the zoning bylaws only allow us a forty-square-foot sign if it's illuminated. And the distance again here, this is And the distance again here, this is kind of an interesting area. You come through a very busy intersection and as you're you have a very short period of time to to view this sign. So we're looking to increase the size of the sign to seventy four square feet with a distance of three oh five, three hundred and five feet from from Cranberry Highway to see the see where the building is. And it would be again, an internally illuminated sign.
Okay, I guess we have the same matter.
Yeah.
I start by Veronica, and this one would be Chris saying on this matter. Veronica?
So it occurred to me once we passed the last one that I don't know a whole lot about illumination in terms of brightness. But some of the L E D lights can be pretty bright. And then I was thinking if we're increasing the sign of the the size of the sign, we should probably take that into consideration and I guess ask what type of illumination is planned? Like, is it gonna light up the whole next lot, I guess? And in this case, you do have neighbors between Granite City and the highway. There's another building, looks like.
It's a commercial as well, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for the comment Veronica. Chris, Chris, want to comment on that?
So so this sign looks like you can only see it like looking through the Salvation Army property. Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
So it only illuminates on that side where the Salvation Army is.
Right.
And it looks like it's the same logo, the same stuff on the sign. It's just it's just larger, correct?
Yes, it is, sir. Yep. And just to make a point that it's, you know, as you talk about the the brightness of things, it's a it's a dark blue background, so the illumination won't be real strong on it because it's if it was a white background, then you'd have you'd have a lot of high illumination. But this being a dark colored background, it will be very mute.
Thank you.
All right, Jake, you have a comment on that?
No comment.
Jimmy?
My only comment would be.
Sorry.
Is that the thing I'm making?
Who's that noise?
One five G.
I we couldn't hear. There's a lot of back noise.
Yeah, that's somebody with a Galaxy phone that no no camera was talking. Hopefully, they they're now muted. Okay, so my only comment would be in response to Veronica's comment. I'm looking at the pictures here. And if you put this sign on the building instead of superimposing it, there are some there are some trees that are gonna put bare leaves in the summertime and screen that some. There's a couple of pine trees here that are gonna screen it some. I'm not concerned at all about brightness in this instance. I have no problem with this sign.
Richard, you could comment, even though you're not voting. Any comment? No comment? Okay, very well. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this project? I hear none. Anyone in the public want to speak against this project? I hear none. Okay, any discussion before we move to close?
Yeah, I'm wondering if Brennan just had one of these guys waiting for the other because he didn't want to go to two different meetings.
It's nice when it works this way.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
I second Chris Conaty.
Second, second by Chris. All in favor say aye Chris.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. If the board feels that this meets the statutory requirement, I believe also again, the topography and shape of the lot that give it the distance from the road. It does give a hardship for this variance. So I I I think it does meet the statute requirement. It is unique. And it does no impose any detrimental on the any detriment on the neighborhood, and it does have hardship. That's my opinion. Anyway, if you guys agree with your wishes.
Make a motion to grant standard conditions.
Have a motion to grant the variance for standard condition for Mister Akabachi. Do I have a second?
I second Chris Conaty.
Second by Chris. All in favor say aye Chris.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye Akari. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Me too.
All right, next one twelve. Twenty one Paul and first. Attorney Morton, and it's a variance fourteen A Old Woods Road. Jimmy?
The zoning Board of Appeals will hold an online public hearing on March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, six thirty P M. To consider petition number twelve dash twenty one for a variance from the requirements of Article six. Table six twenty one of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Paul and Phyllis Balistrachi. Care of Jillian Morton, Esquire at one eighty four Main Street, Wayham, Mass. Proposing to raise the existing cottage and replace it with a new single family dwelling located at fourteen A Old Woods Road, East Wayham, Mass. That appears on assessors map one twenty nine lot WB in the R one thirty zoning district.
Counselor, your name and address and yours.
Hi, I'm attorney Jillian Morton, one eighty four Main Street, Wayham. Thank you all. So I hopefully you have your packets and you're able to kind of look through it as I discussed. I'm not sure if it's helpful for Sonia to stick up also the site plan so we can take a look at it while I'm talking to. I'm not sure if she can do that. But I represent the the owners here of this small cottage nineteen fifties. You guys are familiar with that location up there in Wayham. The clients are looking to, as as Jim said, basically raise that property and be able to make it a home that they can live in. The plans were actually shifting the property back away from the spectacle pond. This is this lot is absolutely unique as far as the standards go regarding a variance, it being basically on two sides having spectacle pond bordering it sort of at the peninsula of that area. And as what's interesting with this property is the frontage. So we're seeking two variances, one being a setback, which is about two feet of a variance, pretty minimal there. But then the frontage, because the lot is is triangular. So they actually have to access their property from in a butter. There's an easement. Excellent. Thank you. So you can see their their driveway going in is actually crossing over in a butter. So when they looked to start to do this project, they were trying to think of making sure to keep with the nature of the neighborhood. And as you can see, the only two variants again, we're we're looking at a setback or believe it's a setback variance. And then the the other variance we're looking here is regarding the front yard setback and and the frontage here is short because there access to the property in that triangular shape. So that's what we're seeking here today. The commissioner, again, it is a variance. As he noted in his denial letter, I would say that this they're looking for this to be their retirement home. So being able to make it a three bedroom, right now it's a small cottage that sort of through the years, it started without heat and then now it has heat. But being able to make it their forever home. Yep, you can see the plans there. There's a garage and pushing it away from the the buffer. So it's fully our intention to go through Conservation Commission after your comments and in your review regarding the plans that we have here in front of us. But as you can see, we've already discussed with Conservation regarding the fact that we're actually moving away from that protected area. So we anticipate that being pretty favorable as far as it goes in front of them. And and we do have the uniqueness and the fact again, because it's bordered by that pond. I'm not sure if any of you were able to go look at the parcel, which is unique. A concern of ours was the abutters, making sure that the that the project would be in, you know, in keeping with the neighborhood and not disrupt anything. We did submit three letters in support and they're all direct abutters. So even the the butter where we have to access over their property is in favor of it, helping and it would help the neighborhood. So hoping to answer any questions regarding the project specifically and be able to just respond if you have any questions regarding the variance or the hardship. But I I do think here this is a unique lot. You can see the shape and the size. That's does hit that point statutorily. And then moving forward to as far as a hardship, I mean, having a one a one bedroom, as you can see, the current existing structure, I believe I put in my in my proposal, it was it's small. It's maybe even with the finish, outdoor deck was about a thousand square foot space to actually live in. So that's what I like to say. If anyone has any questions, they'd be happy to directly answer those.
All right, very good. Thank you. I have a quick question for Commissioner Requena. Is he still here, David?
Yes, I am.
Hi, then I I believe the last time meeting, we did rectify one of these problems. We in the R thirty, we changed the frontage from a hundred to fifty. Do you recall that or it never happened? I believe it passed the last time meeting for front setback in the R one thirty. We didn't change the side setback, but I think the front has been changed.
I don't recall that, Mister Chairman. I wasn't at the last town meeting, but I I have not seen anything that that shows that.
No, and and apparently you have the new book, so. Well, you're the person to ask, actually. So, all right.
Yeah, and there was there was a change made back in two thousand and eighteen when we did the small lots. So if it was a small lot that was grandfathered, it was it was either average alignment or it was twenty ten ten, depending on the size of the lot. But this lot, I believe, is over fifteen thousand square feet, so that would not apply.
Okay. All right, that's fine. All right, so we're gonna start with the with this one. Let me see, let me see. This one, Richard would be sound on this one. So I start by Richard. You comment on that?
By today, I saw what they're proposing. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Veronica?
So is the existing house is going to be torn down?
That's correct. Yep. And oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. And then why? So why put the house where it is when you have thirty two feet on the other side? If you move it over two feet, you get you're even at thirty and thirty on each side, and you don't need a variance on the setbacks.
I think specifically, and the engineer was not able to be with us tonight. They did that change regarding it was because of recommendations from the Conservation because it it does have all those those issues surrounding the wetlands. So that's why that was changed.
Yeah, I see that what the hay bale is that probably ask him to move a little further. You got that Veronica? Do you have the plans?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I'm sure they ask him to move as much as they can.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I I can see the hardship with, you know, the shape and and having the water there and the shape of the lot and having the 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 encroachment of the wetlands. It actually looks like it's on on both sides, but I don't see hay bales on the on the the other side, so I'm not sure.
All right.
That's a that's a house. There's a house lot right next to it.
You mean that lot ten thirty six? Is that what you're talking about? Richard?
Yeah, the water, when I was there today, the the water runs all the way to the right hand side of this map, comes around and then where that hay bales stop, that's the shoreline for somebody else's property.
Oh, oh, you know what? Now I can see where the the shoreline is. Now that you say that, I actually I didn't really notice. I I saw it at the point, but I didn't realize it was that hole where the heat on the other side of the hay bale.
Situation that they're in is is pretty unique.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be good, Veronica. Jim?
I'm 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 fine, except that I can't seem to find it on lot on map one twenty nine lot WB. I can't find a lot WB. I'm looking at the assessors map.
So it's a kind of unique, Mister Chairman, if I could direct it to you, that it's sort of two lots. So you can see on the the plan that lot WB and then lot one thirty seven on the site plan, right? It kind of near where the cursor is on the screen. If you scoot it down a little bit, it's like a little lot and then a bigger lot.
Lot WB. Oh, I see lot WB on that. And then what's the other one? One oh three seven.
All right.
We find one oh three seven. That might help me. And you can move on to somebody else if you want, Nas.
Yeah, Jake, do you have a question?
No questions at this time.
So so the way I see it, the commissioner can answer me. So the the existing, the existing house, it does does it have more than a hundred feet for setback from the front? It does. It does confirm, right?
Yeah, we're creating two non new non conformities. So that's why in its denial letter, he it is a variance.
Yeah, I see that. All right. Commissioner, do they still need a special permit to tear down and rebuild or the variance would do?
They they wouldn't be entitled to a special permit for a raise and reconstruct because it doesn't meet the criteria in Article thirteen. They're creating new non conformities, therefore it would be a variance.
Okay, so a variance to erect a new dwelling, you're saying?
Correct.
All right, okay, very well. So just we could word that properly, properly. All right, did everybody get that what the commissioner said? Okay. Is anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this project? Anyone in the in the public want to speak against? Okay, I hear none. Before we close, Counselor, you want to add anything?
No. Nothing to add at this point unless.
You'll be willing to draft the decision for us to review?
Absolutely.
Okay, and we'll review it. I wish we asked Attorney Shafoni as well, Sonia, if you could pass to Attorney Shafoni, draft his decision as well. Makes your life easier and Ken's life easier, and we could review it and sign it.
Or is it Morton?
Attorney and also Attorney Shafoni for the previous one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, we usually like the attorneys to draft the decision to help out the department because they overwhelmed all the applications. All right, so have have that being said, can we have a motion to close?
No, is it?
Yes.
Mister Requena is, if if I could just make a have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
In light of Mister Requena's comments, because I I don't want to be inconsistent on how I'm voting on this board in terms of creating new non conformities when there are not hardships. I want to understand. So the existing house that's there. It would be a variance for them to knock that down and rebuild this new house in the location that it's at. But if they stayed where they where where that house is currently, there would be nothing stopping them from building off of the existing house. Was that correct?
So when you when you have a lawfully non conforming building, you you can raise and reconstruct, provided that you do not create any new non conformities. That would be allowed by special permit. But once you throw in a new non conformity, there's a list. And I believe it's thirteen seventy one or maybe thirteen sixty one or sixty two in the bylaw that says that you're allowed to raise and reconstruct by special permit, provided you meet the criteria in numbers one through four.
And if I may add, has to be the same exact found footprint, correct, David?
Doesn't have to be the same footprint. It has to be in a conforming footprint. If you if you're if you're creating new non conformities, you you would need a variance. If you had a non conformity that you were intensifying, you could still do it by special permit. As long as you were intensifying an existing non conformity. As long as you were intensifying an existing non-conformity. Um, with the exception of the few that are listed in that code section. Um, I, I believe it's number three. If you read it, it says, as long as you're not intensifying a setback or, or building coverage non-conformity, you can still do it by special permit. But on, on the last, on the last item in the code, it says if you're creating a new non-conformity, you, you cannot raise and reconstruct by special permit. You need a variance.
I, I would like to clarify things for, for Chris, Veronica and Richard. Before you guys came along the board, this is an issue in the R130 that we always have and we, I, I could have swore we had rectified just a setback in the front. This bylaw was written poorly back, I think in 2005. And this bylaw is intended for the R130, for like 130,000 square feet lots. Unfortunately, for new subdivision, unfortunately, when they made this bylaw, they did not uh, uh, do an exception for existing lots that has to be confirming uh, with the old setbacks. So we have seen a lot of these people on Charge Pond Road specifically, this area there, that had lots 10,000 square feet, had a house, wanna add a garage, and they always need a variance. We had a lot of those, unfortunately, because the bylaw did not give them relief on that. But I am very sure the town planner, Mr. Buckland's working to change this to keep the existing lots, not the newly created ones, that they are confirming within existing old setbacks. So I wanna give you an example. There's a house getting built on Charge Pond Road right now. There was no lot on, there was no house. It's like 10,000 square feet, grandfather lot. They, they, they are grandfather with the setback 2010-10. And if you are to do it, uh, so if you are to do it uh, on a regular lot, it's 130-30. But because it's an existing lot and a grandfather, they were able to use the old setback. And unfortunately, with people who has a small house like this get penalized. So the, the bylaw is poorly written and we working very hardly to change it. I believe Mr. Requena and Mr. Buckland uh, working on this so we could change it next time. You guys get what I said, Kina? And you know? Veronica, you get that? Yeah. So hopefully this, this issue will be rectified because everybody has a house there getting penalized because that, the bylaw doesn't work for the whole area. I mean, if you notice all the uh, triangle, all these area, all the lots are small. So everybody wants to put a shed or a garage, has a big problem, has to go for a variance, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman? Area on this parcel?
What's that? Uh, David?
What's the lot area on this parcel?
This one has, looks to me like 20,000, 22,094, 22,000 square feet.
Okay. If, plus the thousand, or if it was at 15,000 square feet, they'd be able to take, um, you know, they'd, they'd be entitled to the benefit of 628. But we only protect lots up to 15,000 square feet. And, and Chairman, to your point, um, we are working on a code change for the fall um, that will address these lots, over 15,000 square feet, up, up to the required lot size. So that, that should be presented in the fall and we are working on that now.
Yeah, that's great. See, that, then again, because they have more square footage, they get penalized, you know, so unfortunately. So I'm glad you guys working on it and it will eliminate a lot of problems because everything on the other side of 25 and Charge Pond Road is, is the same issue. All right, that being said, so uh, wanna move back to close, Jim? Your motion again?
I, I, I will move to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
You have one more question from Mr. Requena. Sorry.
Second time you interrupted the motion. Okay, what's the question?
I'm trying to learn here. Um, so this being close to the water, what do we zoning? So it's currently a one-bedroom house and we're saying that it can go from one bedroom to three and that has no impact on what we're voting on, right? Because I know that there are restrictions in terms of how close it is to the water. I think this is better because it is moving it away from the shoreline, but I'm just curious to know that.
It's a board the house decision. One bedroom, three bedroom, that's board the house.
Oh, okay.
They could deal with that. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Carry on, silent one.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Let's pack it, Richard Sample.
Second by Mr. Sample. All in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazia, aye. It's closed. Any discussion? Okay, hear none? And what's the wishes?
I'm undecided, so I'll sit back and see what somebody else is thinking.
Would uh, Richard, Veronica, Jake like to make a motion?
Motion or we just?
Motion. Motion, what's the wishes? What you, would you like to motion to grant, to deny? What you like to make a motion? I can't, we can't hear you, Richard.
Make a motion to grant?
Okay, we have a motion to grant by Richard. Do I have, as presented, based, based on the uh, that Attorney Morton clarified the, and demonstrated that it does meet the statute requirement of a, of a variance, 40A Section 10, I believe, again. So motion to grant by Richard. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
I'd like to go last.
Okay, Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Jim?
I'll recuse my, I'll, I'll, I'll give a no vote.
Okay, and you abstain, right?
I'm abstaining. I'm not saying no, but I'm not saying.
Okay, so 401, it carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
401, let me change that. All right, thank you. You're done, Counselor. Thank you very much. It carries. I didn't mean to shut you down. All right.
I thought you told me to leave, Commissioner.
No, no, no. I said, I, I didn't want you to hang around if you're not, no, I don't want.
That's what it sounded like.
Uh, no, no, I said, I know it's late and she wants to go.
You don't have to leave, but you can't stay here.
All right.
Only one.
All right, I guess we have nothing else left. Uh, I believe Ventura, it was written wrongly and agenda, it is next time. I guess we have nothing else to say. You guys would like to add a comment or anything? We hear none? Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn by Jim. Jim, do I have a second?
I have a question.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye, closed. Thank you. Thanks, David, for being here. Sonia, thank you very much.
Well, good night.
And Mr. Manise is here too. Thank you.